Stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I hope all your air conditioners are working. It's gonna be brutal. Not complaining, but it's gonna be very hot. All right. Welcome, everyone. This is our regular board meeting number twenty-nine. It's Thursday, July twenty-fourth at ten-ten a.m. And we will begin with public comments. And I'll ask for your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Maybe we should pass the mic out.
My mic. My phone's on, you remember?
Darling Patrol, three zero six two, Palmary Drive in Poland. Thank you for letting me speak. Good morning. Since I was here last, probably April, I have more questions and answers regarding our share of holding ICE detainees at the county jail. This whole deportation debacle is racism and xenophobia disguised as keeping communities safe. Ridding the country of criminals, the worst of the worst. Can you tell me how children in zip-tie handcuffs are a threat? And yet, people who have been here legally for years, contributing to the economy and getting nothing in return, under student visas, temporary protective status, refugee status, or green cards, they're undocumented and navigating a broken immigration system. They're being abducted by masked men with no identification, in unmarked cars, and held in jails such as ours. This is not justice. This is incarceration for profit, and our county jail is a part of it. Each person in a private incarceration is worth twenty-one thousand dollars in investor value. Here's some national data for perspective. Thirteen thousand four hundred and sixty-seven people were booked in June. Forty-seven days is the average days detained. Ten point five percent is the bond approval rate. Seven thousand ninety dollars is the average bond amount, and it's getting higher. Ninety-four million dollars is the estimated revenue. Groups like Core Civic and G E O are making bank. At our Mahoning County Jail, the average stay is forty-five to sixty days. With the capacity for a hundred to a hundred and fifty detainees, at a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day per detainee, paid by the federal government, our tax dollars, you do the math. Since the county budget already allocated funds to run the jail prior to housing these detainees, we, the citizens and voters, have some questions. Number one, who approved this arrangement and when? Number two, how often are we getting reimbursed? Number three, do county commissioners have any influence or control over the funds or the detentions? Number four, is there a surplus from the reimbursements? Number five, what else are these monies funding? Number six, where did the profits go? So in a matter of six months, we are now essentially living in what is a police state, under authoritarianism, and we are not okay with that. This is immoral. What has happened to our democratic values, our moral compass, and our humanity? Executive orders have been created, and Ohio is contacting law-
Fifteen seconds.
-to make ICE arrest the law of the land for this profit machine. But legality does not equal morality. Lest we not forget, we are all immigrants here.
Excuse me. You started off with, your first sentence, the first sentence of your dissertation.
Since I was last here.
And where you went on to say that it was racist or racist, and what else?
Well, I'm just making-
Well, I know you're making it, you're making a statement that the county, that the commissioners-
I'm saying the whole deportation debacle.
Okay, no, and you're making it a racial issue. I won't sit here and listen to you disparage this county, this sheriff, and what this country is trying to do with the immigration problem. And it is a problem. The illegals that came here are a problem. They're getting in line before, oh, yes, they're getting in line before our citizens that need our services. We were being flooded, we were being flooded with immigrants on a daily basis. And it's being put a stop, and they're illegal immigrants. And I've said it before, and I'll say it again.
Undocumented, not illegal. You're undocumented.
Undocumented means they came here illegally.
No, they came here under student visas. I named the things. And those that are here, that for years, they're being abducted.
And you're saying by masked men?
Yes.
Our law enforcement. They're our law enforcement.
Do they identify themselves?
I have a personality of law enforcement. Why do they have to identify themselves? So groups could go around and say-
Why do they have their masks on? Why do they have to be in unmarked cars?
Damn, I'm not gonna argue with you. This commissioner, this commissioner- This will be it. Wants them, this commissioner wants these illegals that the sheriff is holding to be held until ICE comes and takes them to where they, where they need to go to.
Sure you do.
Because we don't want to be overrun.
They're not criminals.
We really gotta move on.
They're not criminals. It's a civil offense.
We appreciate you.
It's a civil offense. It's not criminal.
Thank you. Okay, next. Annie.
Good morning. I agree with you. My name is Annie Gillum. I live at one seven two four Kimmel Street, Youngstown, Ohio. And if their process wasn't that long, for getting them documented, they wouldn't be illegal. And they're not illegal until they put out the country and they come back in. Then they're illegal. That's not fair. At one of our meetings, a Mr. Cecil Monroe had talked about the maintenance at the Board of Elections. And I wondered if anybody ever got a cost to fix those pipes and at the, at the building. Because when they bought this other building, when you all bought the other building, and I'm pretty sure it's gonna have to be rehabbed also, that's money that was spent, and it's gonna be more money to be spent. And how can the pipes couldn't be fixed when it's a storage problem of the machines? And then everything could have been kept in that building and other offices put there in that building. It's got plenty of parking. And it's in an excellent location. And I don't, I don't get, you know, the thinking, you know, for this process. And one of the things Mr. Beatrice brought up was about voting numbers that kind of disturbed me later. You know, he's talking about, you know, as if though we don't vote. I taught my family, you know, and my, my children vote, they vote every year. I, I don't go along with them not voting. You know, people died for us to vote. And a lot of the younger people don't vote because they don't see anything, us getting anything for. That has to be changed. But when you, you know, you disparage at least four or five thousand people for not voting, those numbers, and Carol, you know, those numbers are important, you know, for people to vote. So don't disparage our votes. He was here. Because every time I wanted to catch him after a meeting, he was gone. Democrats are supposed to be, to me, are supposed to be people that help the poor, the average, and still think about, you know, wealthy people, because everybody wants to do the best in life. We need to think about what we're doing. We're not going, if we take, take this building from downtown area, you're making it harder for people that don't have cars, have to get on a bus, to get out and vote. You're also making it harder for people, if you were talking about moving-
I'm sorry.
You know, the job and family service.
They're staying.
Harder for people to get there. Think about what we're doing. Okay? All right. I'll save the rest for later.
Thank you. Alan, would you like to make some comments? We have a very good facilities department, and if there are any issues that we have in this building, they're, they're addressed. And again, I'm the one that was responsible for Oak Hill Renaissance Center, and I am proud of what I did at the Oak Hill Renaissance Center. That kept the South Side together. It's been the home of county government for a very long time. I am not for moving any agency out of the city of Youngstown. I must say it for the hundredth time. Not at all. We need to keep our city strong. It's the county seat. Alan, would you address some of the issues that Annie raised about pipes and how we address issues of things happen over there?
Yeah, so we do make repairs and upgrades on a regular basis in the facility as they become noticeable, if there's a leak or something like that, that happens. Part of what goes into a decision with a building is also the useful life of the building. Once a building gets to a certain age, it becomes cost prohibitive to completely, because you have to gut that building to get to the bones of the building, to repair the things that are breaking. So things that might happen like that would be cast iron pipes. Over time, that cast iron, after many, many years, it will start to crack. And to replace that, you have to tear into that the bones of the building. I'm not saying it's never impossible. All I'm saying is, that gets weighed in a decision, when the commissioners are making a decision, you know, the cost of that type of a repair and retrofit to a building compared to building a new building or moving to another building that has better bones. But as far as the maintenance, we are always doing maintenance. We are always doing upgrades at all areas.
Alan?
Yes, I went down there and I looked around. I looked and see where all the machines were stored and everything else. Are there any pipes above the machines?
So there are various pipes throughout different sections, and it's a hard answer because they have-
I mean, the rooms where the, the rooms where the machines are, I looked, I didn't see any, any water pipes.
So there's fire suppressant pipes that has the, so there are those pipes in those areas. And those can leak as well, and we address that when, when that happens. There, there's never a way to completely get rid of water in a building because we need it. We need it for the restrooms, for services, and for fire suppression. It's just a matter of dealing with the issues as they become noticed or getting ahead of items to make sure that they don't happen. In those areas where the machines are, there's no major pressurized water sources other than the fire suppression system, which from what I understand was new when they moved in.
You know what? I, I need to make a comment to this. Annie, do respect. Board of Elections was never on the beginning stages of anything with the Patriot Building, never. Everything that was dealt with the Patriot Building, and Anthony knows that, and Gino was in some of those meetings as well before he was a commissioner. The, the things that were addressed was building, planning, led, and agencies that were already outside of the city. The Board of Elections was never a part of that original conversation, nor was it something that we were gonna just say, we're gonna bring them there. Did they want to look at it? As many agencies went through the building to look and see what the space was like, the last decision on where they go is directly up to us. Now, there are other locations that we are looking at, which we can't really say right now, that are not in the county, not in the county seat. But when you sit here, as when I sat in the city seat, everything I did was based on my city people. That was my deal. When you sit in a county seat, even though my heart's in the city, I have to also think about the county, which is every other department, every other township, and every other city, and you have to take everything into consideration. So when you hear the rumor mill, or you have people calling you telling you, you gotta go down, they're gonna do this, you gotta do that, they're gonna- Nobody made a final decision on the board. Does the board need to move? Yes. Does J F S need to get out of there? Yes. The life expectancy of that building is now done. The money that we spent to renovate it, we could put towards a new facility in the city that would be more accessible to the people, have more parking. So those are things that have to be here that we, what we discussed. So I want you to know that, because you have people look at me and say, well, you're gonna do this. No, we didn't really make that decision yet, where the board's gonna go. Or any other agency that's up at Oak Hill. So I want you to know that. And if that were the case, I'd come to the church and tell you what was happening. Because I've been around you, I've been around this group of people from your parish and other parishes in the city. Because I've gotten calls from other people saying the same thing, whether they're westsiders, eastsiders, northsiders, same questions that everybody's posing. So I want you to know that. When you come here and say this, we know what you, what you mean. So I just want you to know what the original vision of that building was at the Patriot. We got that building for two point five million. It would cost maybe, maybe two million to renovate, to put offices in there for other people, maybe. Because it's the building itself. If you were to look and build that building today, it would be fifteen million dollars. I mean, and you guys could check that. You know more about buildings than I do. So I just wanted you to know that, Annie, because I hear this every week.
I understand. But did we ever get a cost to fix those pipes, the suppression pipes?
They're, they're not broken.
So there's, there's no issue that I'm aware of. If there is, Dave needs to bring them to my attention. They're not bringing any issues to my attention because you don't know of any issues in their area. There's always possibility that a pipe anywhere in any building. So that's what I think Dave is saying is that there's a possibility, there's always a possibility, no matter what building you're in. No reports have been given to my office that there are specific leaks or concerns. The pipes were inspected. There are new copper piping as of when the Board of Election moved in for the fire suppression system. There is no indication that we need to do anything with them. They're not showing signs of disrepair or anything like that.
Because I know, we have a, a building with fire suppression sprinkler system. It's a pain.
Oh, my God.
Period. But-
It's a lot of money.
And they get inspected, you know, twice a year. You know, so I'm not understanding. What is, what is he screaming about?
Well, that, that issue, and I, and I, I respect Attorney Beatrice for his position in the community. But he also talked about the, the machines being on pallets. And what he left out was, there's a pallet jack sitting next to those pallets that the machines are on, because that's how they move them to bottom. So he tried to insinuate that they were on pallets to keep them out of water, for whatever reason. But they're sitting on pallets because that's how they move them, with a pallet jack. So, I mean, you gotta take everything with a grain of salt as far as that goes. Thank you, Alan. Thank you. Yes. Name and address.
Tracy, many, Poland, Ohio. I just want to comment on this lady's thoughts on the moving the Board of Election. For what reason was the building in Austintown bought and paid for prior to Gino coming on? For what reason was it bought and paid for?
Do I address that?
No, you don't have to.
Okay, so if it was not addressed for moving the elections to Austintown, then my opinion, and I'm from Poland, I have no, no roots, I did grow up in Youngstown, but Youngstown is the hub of Mahoning County. Elections need to stay in Youngstown. Otherwise, I feel people are gonna be disenfranchised from being, you know, if they don't have cars or vehicles and anything able to get to Austintown to vote, you're gonna lose voters. That is just my opinion. And on the thoughts of the illegal immigrants coming in, I just want to say that to accuse this board of being anything but what, you know, they are being fair people. Under the forty-fourth president, people were put in cages. Under the forty-sixth president, people were put in cages. I do not believe for one minute that children are zip-tied. And the reason why that the people that are police and trying to get people to get them where they are, to wear masks, is because people are doxing them. They are finding their addresses, and they are going and tormenting them. All I wanted to say, because I think people are misunderstanding, that it is not a police state. It has not changed since the forty-fourth president, the forty-sixth president to now.
You haven't been watching TV because they are being-
We can't have-
So that's all I wanted to say.
She gets her time to speak.
They are being hit up.
I understand, but we need to, I know.
This whole deportation debacle, I did not accuse just them. They're part of it.
That's all I wanted to say.
They are being hit up.
And I wanted to make a point. There are a lot of Europeans in this country that are being deported, and they're here undocumented as well.
Because they are being zip-tied.
Trying to keep things as cordial as we can. Okay? Next, please.
You don't need any of this.
Can I do about it?
Hi. Michael Kripchak, two-three-six-one Shawnee Trail, Youngstown, Ohio. Just real quickly, I, I didn't want to get the actionable items lost in the shuffle. Our main concerns are, one, who approved this arrangement and when with the housing of the ICE detainees? Two, how often are we getting reimbursed? Three, do county commissioners have any influence or control of these funds or detentions? Four, is there a surplus from these detentions? Five, what else are these monies funding? And six, where do these profits go? So ultimately, what we're hoping for is, I, I think as I spoke again, spoke last time about, is just some transparency. Is there any way to get this information out to the public, these answers out to the public?
Mike, you know what the best thing with that is?
Jerry Green.
Is that you need to address that with Sheriff Green.
So-
He's the chief law enforcement officer in the county. He has federal contracts with the Federal Bureau of Prisons. All of that is, is flowed through on those inmates that qualify to come into our jail to be detained. I can't, personally can't speak for the federal level.
Yes, sir.
I can't speak for the prison system, but Jerry Green has done a very good job in that jail. And those issues need to be addressed to Jerry, because I'm not gonna sit here and speak on behalf of his jail.
I, I guess-
And we want to keep his jail funded.
Yes, sir.
Because if not, we're in violation, and guess what? We go back to federal court. We go back to all the mess that we did years ago. And I don't want to relive that.
But my question is, if we have questions about the money coming in, how they're being spent, what surplus there is-
Sheriff can explain those particular items on his budget and where that money flows from.
So U.S. commissioners have no influence, input, or control over those funds and their disbursements?
We control the sheriff's budget, but we don't control how they're coming in.
I understand that, but that's, that's what we're concerned about.
And you could ask him that. But if you're concerned, you need to address that to the sheriff.
But once the funds come in, you guys do have control over those funds.
Those funds are already spent. Yeah, pause.
So there was a budget shortfall?
No.
Previously?
Act, no. If you remember, we put on a justice tax-
Yep.
-that helped keep the sheriff afloat, because you don't want to get in violation, because we're mandated by state law to have a jail.
But I'm saying that tax was passed before this money was known to come in.
And that revenue, Mike, that comes through that-
Yep.
-is part of that budget to keep the sheriff stepping.
So before we knew the ICE detention through coming here, that was already taken into-
They had federal inmate contracts before all this issue ever came to be, years ago, and Jerry worked hard to get that contract.
Okay. Do you, if the sheriff is unresponsive, can I come back here and discuss that with you more?
Sure. Absolutely.
Great. Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Anyone else? Anita.
How's it going?
Good.
Good morning.
What's happening?
It's gonna be a warm day. Good morning, everyone. My name is Anita Davis. I'm on Youngstown Sixth Ward City Council.
For now.
The address I use is, I think it's twenty-six South Phelps.
Thank you.
First off, I was in law enforcement for thirty-six years. And there were times that police officers had to wear masks. They would, to be investigated. It's not my forte, his forte. But for routine patrol work, routine arrests, traffic stops, you put on a uniform, you don't put on a mask. I had to investigate my neighbors. So knowing my identity was not a problem. And if it's a problem, then you don't need to be in that job if that word's bought.
Amen.
Amen. Okay. That's not what I came here for? But it just, it kind of hurt me when he, when he talked about law enforcement and, and wearing masks and things, because that's not what we normally did. Not for the routine part. Very briefly, I know I've been here talking before. I like to use the dear people, the dear people as an example, and the members of the Arab community. When they were coming to city council, week after week, day after day, they never let up. And I'm not gonna let up either. Please do not, it has to come to it. Don't move our Board of Elections. There are other alternatives, and it's not just about the residents of Youngstown, Ohio, who would be affected. We had the folks from Campbell and Strouders as well. All of them equally challenged sometimes as so far as transportation. Right now, the Board of Elections is right there on a route. And we would be disenfranchising, you would be disenfranchising more and more people by sitting out there after transportation is not there along with it, and it's not. So I would urge you, while I do understand firmly about the necessity, about the dollars and cents of things, but I also know that there's a cost to the poor democracy as well. And it's not about disenfranchising, it's about making people more enfranchised. So if you have any influence, if you put in a good word, please do so and keep the Board of Elections here in, in Youngstown, because I do believe that it's most accessible to the majority of the folks of Mahoning County who are without transportation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. You good?
We're good.
Anyone else? Okay. All right, Carol.
Motion for the approval of, motion for the approval of previous minutes of board meeting number twenty-eight, Thursday, July seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, and approval of bills for payment.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Vamidh Agadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaka Panthe?
Yes, legal notice, number one, recycling, Lou Vega.
Good morning, commissioners. How are you? This legal notice is to inform the general public that we will, the Solid Waste District will be receiving comments on our solid waste management plan update from August fourth through September third, after which we will hold a public hearing at our normal, normally scheduled policy committee meeting on September eighth.
Okay. Thank you, Lou. Motion?
Motion for the approval of number one, legal notices.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner D. Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Vamidh Agadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaka Panthe?
Yes, journal entry number one.
Motion for the approval of journal entry number one.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner D. Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Vamidh Agadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaka Panthe?
Yes, agreements A through E. We'll begin with the engineer's office. Rick.
Morning, Commissioner. A is an agreement with T S I Western Star for repairs, our vehicle number sixty-three. The estimated amount of two thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Okay, thank you. And facilities, Alan.
Morning, commissioners. B is an agreement with the contact corporation for replacement of a hot water tank located, located at the Bev Road in amount of eleven thousand two hundred and ninety dollars general funds.
Okay. And letter C, JJC?
Good morning, commissioners. This is an agreement with Morning Star Cleaning for cleaning services in the amount of thirty-one thousand two hundred dollars general fund.
Okay. That must have been a big spill. Let, D and E, Phil.
Good morning. This is an agreement with JDM for that has a control work at thirty-one eighteen Yosha in the amount of eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. And letter E is an agreement with Foundations for the Future for lead hazard, healthy homes work at sixteen seventeen Youngstown Road Southeast in the amount of thirty thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars. Both are non-general.
Thank you.
Motion for the approval of number two, agreements A through E.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner D. Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Vamidh Agadi?
Yes.
A is a change order with number six with routine gap in the excavating for Western Reserve Road widening project, sending the amount of five thousand five hundred nine dollars and eight cents. Or B is a change order number two with B and G trucking and construction for the Market Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project, and that's any amount of forty-seven thousand six hundred four dollars eighty-two cents. Those are both non-general.
Thank you, sir. And Led, Marielleis?
That's change order number one is with Holland Company, and that is for replacement of a storm door at five fifty-five Detroit Avenue, the amount of seven hundred and seventy dollars.
Thank you. Carol?
Motion for the approval of number three, change orders A through C.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Emilio Aguirre?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaka Panth?
Yes, resolutions?
Motion for the approval of number one, resolutions additions.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Emilio Aguirre?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaka Panth?
Yes, resolutions?
Motion for the approval of number one, resolutions additions.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Emilio Aguirre?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaka Panth?
Yes. Moving on, resolutions, letters A through G. We'll begin with commissioners. OMB, Jen is not with us, so we will go with Joe Rossi. Joe, our director?
How are you today?
Directional.
I'll be up there.
I hate to tell you what to do. You know what to do, but come on up.
Chris Paul. We have a resolution in front of you for renewal of the senior services levy. The levy provides services such as personal care and homemaking services for folks in their home, chore services, minor home modifications, care coordination, emergency response, you know, the little buttons, the adult daycare services and home-delivered meals. We've been providing, the county's been providing funds for this levy since twenty-seventeen. It passed in twenty-sixteen with renewal in twenty-twenty. These services are for individuals who are not Medicaid eligible. So there are folks that are, make just enough money to live by, but not enough money to pay for services for themselves. So our goal has always been to ensure that the residents of the county get, residents over the age of sixty, get services they need to remain where they want to be, and that's their home. So that's what we're doing. I want to do, give you a quick update with all the heat issues going on. We have, we've provided so far thirty-seven air conditioning units for residents of the county, plus we have three more in the works to go, so we'll be at forty. Everybody, if you got neighbors, elderly neighbors, people with disability, check on them. It's going to be really, really hot the next couple of days. We're going to be close to a hundred with heat index. Just check on them, make sure they're, they're safe and sound, and everybody stay hydrated.
Joe?
Yes, Carol.
What about international towers? Did we take care of some of that before they, the owners should really be doing everything, but.
Yeah, correct. We have, that's where the majority of these air conditioners are gone, and it is in the international tower.
It's very warm in there.
Yes, and you and I can have a conversation about how I feel about that, but we got to make sure the seniors are safe. That's, that's our ultimate goal.
And Joe, this is a renewal?
Yes, it is.
And it's for five years?
Correct.
And how much does it bring in?
It brings in about four point one, somewhere around that, that ballpark, I think so.
Million?
Yeah, four point one million. And it provides excellent service. We, I mean, just, just an idea of what kind of services we've provided in the past. We've done about eight hundred thousand meals, home-delivered meals, which are important for folks. We've provided over three hundred thousand units of service for personal care. That's bathing, helping a person dress, those types of things. So the services are out there. I mean, we're putting them out there. It's been a, a pleasure, as for, for Direction Home to oversee the levy. It really has been. We've seen how it has improved the quality of life for folks over the age of sixty, and we're just hoping that the voters will continue to do that.
Again, you could stress, these are people over sixty that.
Yes, they are.
That make too much.
You know, they kind of, I always, I always call those staff, it's, it's kind of like the way my mom was. You know what I mean? She, you know, had just enough money to not make any of the programs that the government does. And this gave them an opportunity. It gave her, unfortunately, she passed before the levy came into effect, but they would have been able to provide those types of services.
It's really a quality of life for our seniors in the county.
Yes, it is.
The residents provide for them.
Yep, and it's, I mean, it's a valuable service. And, and we have, you know, we do socialization and senior centers, we do all those things. I mean, the farmer's market program is a, a program where people can, which helps both the farmers and it helps the seniors. Yes, yeah, the restaurant basement. So we got lots of, we run a lot of programs to ensure folks are safe in the community. Protective services, we provide funding for APS, guardianship programs, things in which folks need help with. And that's truly what our goal has always been.
And again, if, if you're not in government and seeing what this, it does, and if you're not in need of the services, and see what it provides, people just don't know. People just don't know the role that, you know, Direction Home and this all paints, you know.
You know, and I appreciate the commissioner's support for the last, you know, for, for as long as you've all served in the office, and I appreciate all the help you have given us, and our seniors appreciate it too. So thank you.
Joe, I'd like, I'd like to say this, and of course, I endorse this and endorse you and what you've done. I'm going to date myself here just a little bit. Do you remember the Medicaid program years ago?
Yep.
The Quimby and the Slimby was part of the Medicaid for those people who would fall in between the cracks, and they would make you apply differently for those programs. Those no longer exist. Here's the gentleman and his organization that plugs those gaps for those people that just can't make it. Please consider supporting this levy. I endorse it a thousand percent. It is so important. There are people who can't help themselves. They can't bathe, they can't cook, they can't take their garbage out, they got to get to the doctor. I mean, they do phenomenal work, you and your staff.
Thank you. It's my staff.
I know that.
They're, they're the best.
Would you like to say anything?
Cassandra.
Cassandra?
No, thank you for, for all your support. And it really is the program that helps those who, who even helps so that they can remain in their home. The last thing individuals want to do is have to go to a nursing facility, and this program truly helps those folks who would otherwise be in a nursing home, stay in their home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, letter B, Robin, how you doing, chief?
This involves the appointment of a nine-one-one administrator and a physician for emergency planning with the EMA. As a result of a sample interview of all the candidates about two weeks ago, Connor O'Halloran was the candidate that we read on unanimously and recommended to the board for a point.
Thank you. And Dean, RHR director, would you like to make some comments on the hire? Can't hear you, Dean. Turn your mic on.
That's helpful, isn't it? I had it on. Good morning. Yes, no, I was just going to comment that Robin was there to introduce Connor. He was unable to be with us today, but he will be present in the near future for formal introductions, and we're really looking forward to him joining the team.
Okay, thank you very much. And letter C, Holly, I'll let you do that one.
This is the resolution approving the appointment of the deputy clerk as acting clerk in absence of the clerk of the board, and that is going to be Maria Knight. She'll be acting as Nancy's backup.
Very good. Thanks, Maria.
Congratulations.
Good job. All right. And Susan, our law librarian, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Holly. Good morning, Nancy. D is a resolution requesting approval from my board to enter into an agreement with Thompson Writers West Publishing for a one-year renewal of our current contract at six thousand six hundred dollars a month. E is a resolution approving that my board enter into an agreement with Trellis for research services at the amount of three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for the year.
Thank you, Susan. And recycling, Lou Vega?
Commissioners, item F is a date issue with some supplies for our education department.
Okay, thank you. And sheriff? What do we have here? Anybody?
Should be on the screen.
Adam Cheska?
Adam was on, but it seemed like he was cutting in and out.
Holly, you want to do that one?
Sure. G is for the sheriff's office, resolution of necessity to purchase supplies, security cameras, video supplies, miscellaneous parts, materials, and services from Motorola Solutions in excess of the seventy-five thousand dollars threshold for the year twenty-twenty-five, and this is through the state cooperative purchasing program.
Thank you, Holly. Is there a motion?
Motion for the approval of number two, resolutions A through G.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Emilio Aguirre?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaka Panth?
Yes, and for the good of the order, any elected officials or department heads care to comment? Lou Vega?
Commissioners, I just want to let everybody know that we do have a tire recycling drive this Saturday at the Canfield Fairgrounds from ten to two. Check our website for restrictions and more information.
Thank you, sir. What else?
Megan, the festivals.
Megan, did you want to?
Well, I can draw attention real quick to Mount Carmel Festival starting today. About the tire drive. So Mark, the Mount Carmel Festival starts today. They're actually going to be open for lunch, so just in a couple hours, go get some lunch. And opening ceremony is tonight at five-thirty, which many of us will be at. So go get your fair food and go see all of the great historical exhibits that they have. They have lots of tables set up. And then if you can't make it and you're wanting your Italian food fair fix, lots of restaurants in the downtown area are kind of doing some setups that they have lots of fair food. Casa de Canzannata just released a new menu that has all your fair favorites. So if you want to get some of the fair favorites. And there's a couple of things in the works for some of our downtown restaurants. We always want to make sure we support our downtown restaurants. So there's a couple of things in the works with some Italian.
Fun things.
Yes, some Italian nights that we'll keep you posted on with some details. Go to the CVB's website, exploremahoning.com, we'll always have updates there for you. Lots happening this weekend, make sure you check it out. Anything from, you know, like a kind of a yard sale at a brewery, to festivals, to everything. So check out our website. Don't ever say there is nothing to do in Mahone County. You can do it.
Very good. And Megan, we can't forget our Greek brothers and sisters at Saint Demetrius in Warren.
We got.
Great food.
You, you can say, I try and stick to Mahone County.
That's all right.
You know, even though I love.
I'm all over. I'm all over counties. Moving stronger than you'll ever know.
There he goes, he might run for Congress. Watch out, Mike.
I'm bringing Pastor Simon with me when that happens. All right, no, great food there too, all over the Mount Carmel Fest. Tonight's the opening ceremonies will be there, and it's going to be great. Anyone else? You know, Carol?
You know, and I just want to thank everybody for coming again this week. And also, like Megan says, there's a lot of things going on in Mahone County. Particularly, I kind of have to throw the shout-out to Mount Carmel, because St. Anthony is actually a partner to their parish. And we sponsor and support each other, and it's going to be great. And she's right about the food. And my cousin has pastry stand there. And I got to say, I shouldn't say this, but they are delicious cinnamon buns, cannolis, you name it. But there, there's a lot to do in Mahone County. And I, I have to say that there's more here to do on a weekend than has ever been in our county. So we, I'm, I'm happy to say that we're moving ahead. Youngstown is the hub to the county, as I've always said. And we have never discounted the, the city of Youngstown. Because as you look here, two of us belong to the city of Youngstown, Gino and myself, so.
I don't. Doesn't matter, I've worked here thirty-five years.
Talking about living.
Oh.
We're living in the city of Youngstown.
It's okay to be a bulldog.
As I'm out, oh, thank you.
I mean, he's a, he's a Southsider. I'm a normally a Dry Hill, but now I'm a Westsider. We've covered all areas. But do have a safe weekend and enjoy yourselves. There is a lot to do, and we will see you next week.
Gino? I just want to tell everybody, have a good time this week at, of course, the Mount Carmel Festival. And I just, I just want to explain something to people, in case you don't know. I ran for this seat because I saw a need to have a voice for the community. And you're going to get my voice. Not everybody's going to agree with me all the time. But I'm not going to sit here and, and allow people just to maybe disparage this, this, to these commissioners, this county, our sheriff's department, our country, in a way. I'm not going to do that. And if you don't like that, I'm sorry. I'm here for four years. I'm going to tell you how I feel. And I feel, I feel, and, no ma'am, it's not directed to you, it's, it's, it's on everything. I'm not going to sit here quietly. I mean, you know, you asked a question, and I don't think we can go back and forth now, but I'm going to answer you.
Maybe you have a guilt complex.
I'm telling you, ma'am, I have no guilt, believe me. I don't feel guilty for anything. I'm telling you.
There's not Europeans here that aren't being deported.
There we go. I'm just telling you, you're going to know, if there's, if there's no, any place where you can't, you question me and you question us, where else would a public, what else would a public meeting, should you be able to do that? And sometimes you're going to get an answer you don't like, but I'm going to answer you. You know, that's all there is to it.
You apparently don't like what I have to say either, so.
It's not, it's not like I don't agree with you. I don't agree with you. Now, on, on another note, we're here again, if we started the conversation last week about property taxing and how we could alleviate some of the property tax. And you heard Joe and the work that his, his group does with the property tax. Being in this position, I feel a responsibility to make sure Joe has what he needs to service our residents. Are property taxes too high? Yes. Are they fair with the way they're assessed? Absolutely not. I was talking to somebody the other day, he said his property taxes are three hundred and sixty dollars a month. He lives in a township. Three hundred and sixty dollars a month, he said his neighbors, his neighbor pays a hundred and twenty dollars a month because his house is a little bit smaller. Now, he said, I'm paying for the same police protection, I'm paying for the same schools, I'm paying for the same fire protection. That's not fair, and he's right. Because you wouldn't, you wouldn't have a contractor come into your house, and your house is bigger. So you expect a contractor to charge you more because your house is bigger than his rate. That has to be fixed. Something has to be done. It has to be fixed at the state level. I hope, pray they're doing something, because I absolutely believe that this, this initiative is going to be on the ballot, and I absolutely believe it's going to pass. And anybody who says it's not is wrong. We're, we're having discussions about what the ramifications would be and what we could do. And right now, there's, there's not a lot, there's not a lot. But I hope the state's doing the same thing, because it's always easier to plan than in the middle of a fight. You know what I mean? If, if, if something, if this would happen, if it would be taken away, they better have some, they better have a backup plan. Because I think Jack Low said, you know, and then, and then it's always different. But Jack Low said if you, he goes, every fighter got a plan until he goes in and gets punched in the face. Then everything changes. Well, it's going to change, but we have to have something. We have to have some kind of plan going, going into this and look, look to see what we're going to do next. You know what I mean? I mean, it's heavy talk, but I mean, it's, it's why I ran. Good discussion. And I want to compliment Dan Palm Peely for a wonderful article you wrote on the property tax issue.
Thank you.
I'm tired. I don't want to get into any arguments right now. I could, there's some things I want to say to correct the record today that were said. But I think I'm just going to, to move on and save it for, for another day.
A rainy day.
A rainy day. A rainy day.
When it's miserable outside.
And, but we'll revisit it.
Have you heard of a circuit break? Circuit break?
Oh, there he is, Connor, welcome.
I was across the street doing some emergency preparedness already.
Glad you're here. This is our, this is our new director. Would you like to come up? Not to put you on the spot, if you don't, you don't have to.
I grew up in a family of lawyers, I can talk. Yeah, so formerly, my name is Connor O'Halloran. I was the captain for the Department of Fire and District up until this new job came open, so I've got a master's degree in emergency management. One of the executive leaders of our incident management assistance team, which we started kind of as a result to the train derailment and the building explosion downtown. So looking forward to making a big difference and doing what I can.
Thank you so much. Looking forward to having you.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
Thanks for having me.
Okay. Nancy, our next meeting?
The next Thursday, right here.
Okay, motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Emilio Aguirre?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaka Panth?
Thank you.